Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the November 17th meeting of the Hyde Park Planning Board. Before I open the meeting, I want to note that this is conducted as authorized by Governor Hochul under New York State Emergency Legislation, which amends the open meetings law and allows public meetings such as this one to be held virtually. May I first confirm that every member is alone? Ms. Weiser?
Alone.
Mr. Waters?
Alone.
Ms. Wasser?
I am alone.
Oliver?
I am alone.
Mr. Napoli?
I'm alone.
And Vice Chair Dexter?
Alone.
Thank you. Please join me in saluting the Stars and Stripes. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you and welcome. The first item on the agenda is the new public hearing for River Ridge. This is a minor subdivision amendment. And the reason why we're going through this, as everyone will recall, is that the applicants need to change the location of its wastewater easement. Since that is filed with a subdivision plat and they need to file a new plat, we actually have to go through a subdivision process. But nothing otherwise is changing on the surface. Nothing is changing anywhere, except for the location of the actual sewer line easement. Make a motion to open the public hearing.
I'll make that motion. And Dexter?
Second, Stephanie Wasser.
Thank you. All in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
No nays or abstentions, so the motion carries unanimously. Councilman Krupnik, I believe that there were no members of the public who signed up for this application tonight?
That is correct.
Thank you. Any comments from the consultants or the board?
No, my, well, my only comment is that I looked through everything. It seems, seems to be fine. I just need to have somebody check the meets and bounds with, against the the easement on the map, but other than that, everything, everything looks fine.
Mr. Schneider is here of River Ridge. Paul, do you want to add anything?
No, nothing to add at this point. Thank you.
You're welcome. I just saw you popped on, so I wanted to give you the opportunity. And if there's another comment, they make it a motion to close the public hearing.
So I'm moved. Stephanie Wasser?
Second. And Dexter?
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
No nays or abstentions. Note that this, while we are closing the public hearing, we permit now seven days traditional public comment in case someone just happened to find out about this just now and couldn't pop on. So we will have this for, consider approval or resolution at the next meeting. Paul, I have a very happy Thanksgiving. We'll see you in December.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you to the board members. Happy Thanksgiving.
Happy to help. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is Bellafield at Hyde Park admitted concept plan. Make it a motion to open the public hearing.
Make that motion, Chris Oliver?
Second.
Rob Waters?
All in favor, please raise your hand and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. So I'm going to give just a very brief history of this project. This was first proposed to the town back in 2004. This is a 339 acre parcel located across from the Culinary Institute of America. In 2007, after many, many, many meetings between the town board, the planning board, and the applicants then, they received an approval for a cons, the concept plan that they had submitted. In the intervening years, we had first the Great Recession of 2009. Then we had a change in ownership. Moving forward past that, we also had COVID. We had other changes happen economically, as well as changes in retail and the retail environment, I should say. In the interim, the new owner, Tom Morroy of T-Rex Capital Group, met with the town board as well as members of the planning board off and on for the last, basically 10 years, discussing changes to the concept, what might work, what might not work any longer there as the nature of the economy has changed. And last year, Mr. Morroy came up with a, I won't say a brand new concept plan, but a very different concept plan. So that's what he's seeking approval for is this amendment. There are elements of the original that stay the same, primarily the road layout. There's also still a very healthy and robust mix of residential and non-residential or commercial uses. But the applicant has now gone in the direction of taking more agricultural, a heritage from the area, incorporating that into the site plan and more experiential commercial. Meaning you can go and perhaps see hops that are being grown and then go to a brewery and sample the beer. In the interim, since this was submitted and reviewed, the planning board and the applicants and its consultants have gone back and forth. Project changes have been made. I believe that the planning board thinks now that we're at the point where we can consider closing the public hearing once, if we hear from people tonight, and then make a recommendation ultimately to the town board. An important point to note is that the planning board in this case, this instance, does not have the final decision. It is the town board who will accept or deny, I suppose, the amended concept plan. Once they accept that amended concept plan, then the applicants can come back to the planning board for what's called Final Development Plan, what we would call Site Plan. So different sections of the approved concept plan were then be proposed to the planning board. More detail would be added, although I will add right now that there's a design guidelines manual. It's been worked on and worked on and updated and updated. That will actually guide a lot of the details that normally go forward between the planning board and applicants concerning architectural styles, designs, et cetera. That's all kind of been handled here. That's a handy reference tool for them. Landscaping has also been dealt with in abundance. They will go from more manicured areas featuring nicer species, I'll say, of plants. Not nicer, but more exotic species of plants. But as you go into the more natural areas that are meant to stay more rural, you'll be looking at native plants, native landscaping and abundance of, we'll just call local. So that noted, let me turn it over to Mr. Boudreau, who will be here to present tonight for the applicant. Larry?
Okay. Good evening, everybody. I'm going to share my screen. And everybody can see that?
We can.
Okay, fantastic. Okay, well, again, Mr. Chairman, very good job on kind of summarizing all of that. It has truly been quite a, quite an experience. I have worked at Chazen from at the beginning of the project when I met Tom in 2012 and then had since come over here to work with T-Rex and the Bellfield team. And we've been through a lot during that time. So this presentation, I'll just keep very brief. I wanted to just note to the public that this is a team effort. It's not, you know, Tom Morroy, Larry Boudreau, Steve Drossi, Larry Pelletier. There's a whole bunch of team, team members behind us. I wanted to give a brief update of where we're at today. Everybody drives by on Route 9. Present the overall concept master plan, circulation trails, the program concept. Do a brief 2007 and 2021, what we're currently proposing side by side. The Phase 2, which the planning board and town board both ask us for what, what's coming next. So we have that nailed down and then some SIKR top topics. So I wanted to thank Hart Howerton, Nick and Nicole over there really helped us with that. Of course, the Chazen Company, the Weisman Group did the marketing study, which, which defines the program mix in detail. Jennifer is on tonight, Jennifer Van Tylle, cutting Federer. And just this whole other group of people we have. Everything started last summer, summer of 2020. Of course, during COVID, we went down to Saranby and started with place making down there with Steve Nigren. And that was the beginning of our development of the current concept plan. So we started in 2018, as, as you may remember. And it's funny, we put about $4 million in the ground and nobody said anything. We put the walls on the entrance drive coming in and we got a lot of phone calls. So as soon as we went vertical with the walls that people could see, we got a lot, a lot of nice calls. So during that time, a lot of work, infrastructure was put in the ground with the DOT. If you can see my cursor, the DOT entrance across from the Culinary Institute, a full intersection. Then as you travel north, there's a right in, right out off of Route 9 that goes into the northern part of the site. Right now, that's our access to the wastewater treatment plant, which is in this area here. We also developed the access to the hotel and developed the hotel pad. In order to close on that, that parcel had to be a certified pad. And with it is the construction access off of West Dorsey. And again, this construction access is limited only from Route 9 to the access for into Bellfield. Nothing going westbound from, from 9G. So the amended concept plan, what's interesting about this plan and how it difference differs from '07. '07 was planned in zones and blocks, five zones and then, you know, as much as four blocks in each zones. Here, what we did is we have five neighborhoods, distinct neighborhoods. The Village Area, which is, you know, houses both commercial and residential. The Crescent, which is where the second hotel is. The Ridge, and these names are defined by the landscape feature itself. The Ridge, the Terrace Area, which overlooks the Marichi Kill in St. Andrews, of course, at the corner of St. Andrews and, and Route 9. What you also see in this concept plan is how we integrated the pedestrian corridors throughout the neighborhood. So the idea is that if you were living in the terrace, you would have a pedestrian trail that gets you into the village. Same thing with the Ridge or the Crescent, or you can go from the Crescent to the Terrace through a pedestrian path. And that's, that's very well defined, thought, thought through. It gets us into the open space areas, the natural areas, and integrates the pedestrian with the community. So again, the road system, I'll go back, the main road, road system here. It's interesting what we picked up at, at Saranby was what they call an Omega Road. So this is kind of has that Omega look and shape. And it actually, from a planning standpoint, works really well when you highlight, you know, natural features. So in this case, there is a bowl here. This is a natural bowl. And that is a core wetland there, which obviously will be preserved and this all works around it. And it, you know, continuously flows throughout the neighborhoods in the community and then terminates at the, you know, at, at St. Andrews. All of our utility corridors will be coordinated, you know, through, through the vehicular circulation as well. And all that is, is planned thoroughly. The other thing here is the vegetative setback along Route, Route 9. We've worked with the planning board quite a bit. And in our site walk out there, we, it really was clear that this setback needed to remain intact. So as you travel north on 9, this vegetative, which you, which you see right now, will essentially be in place for that first 150 feet. We will go in there and clean it up and use it in parts for, for stormwater. We asked the planning board to consider a, an access element or an entry element right off the, the front entry, which would be within that 150 feet. Moving forward to circulation and trails, this is a fairly detailed map, again, presented with all our cemental materials. It breaks down where the trails are in green. So you can see there's a significant amount of that. And I believe the linear footage is, gosh, but Tom, do you remember, is it, is it 10 miles of trails? Is that, is that what we have? I think that's what it is.
Yeah, it's 10 miles.
Yeah, 10 miles. We define the overlook areas, neighborhood parks, common space, pocket parks. And you can kind of see all of that integrated throughout the community. Program concept here, this defines and it really shows the uniqueness of this master plan, how we integrate the various residential uses planned. And this defines here, this, this yellow, these are townhouses. This area here, these are cottage lots, whereas these are estate lots. This purple, these are patio homes or duplexes. The pink here are condo flats. So we have condo flats kind of anchoring both sides of the north, the, the north and the south end of Main Street. And then apartments are defined as orange and then loft apartments here. The red is all commercial. And then blue are public, you know, facilities or educational and used. This, this structure here, of course, is the, located the southwest part of the property is the approved hotel, which we expect to begin soon. So again, '07, 2021, kind of a quick snapshot side by side. '07 residential square footage, you can see the 1,001,23062 as compared to what we're proposing, 1,242. And, and also note that, again, this has been a collaborative effort with not only our, our team, but the planning board and the town board. And, and this number has, as we worked through the process and understood the concerns of the boards, you know, did come down. And this ratio was higher and now it's down to 6040. Previously was 6238. As compared to what it was in '07, 53% residential and 47% commercial. Again, I did kind of point out a couple of things. The change in development ratios, as I noted here, it's 7% between residential going up and commercial going down, 7%. But again, increasing in housing types, and I did show that in the program plan, the state and cottage lots for single family, multi-family townhouses, patio homes, condominium flats, loft apartments. And apartments. Now, when I say apartments, the apartments will, will be built over a parking garage. So they aren't, you know, three-story, you know, flats, you know, walk up. There's a parking garage underneath them. That parking garage, the way the site works would be, half of it would be tucked into the hillside. So Phase 2, this, this was a, something that the, both the town board and planning board really wanted us to take a hard look at and, and present what we felt we could do next. And, and it took, you know, many months to get this figured out, but this is what we came up with. And so the net of this is all over here. The top of the page is the program. And we're proposing a mix of loft apartments, rental apartments, again, over, over parking garages and condominium flats. And then a variety of different commercial uses. Of course, we have the hotel at 106, currently approved, a winery, cider mill, inline retail restaurant, and then all the way down for a total of 282,000 square feet for Phase 2. That Phase 2 is defined as this purple area here. Of course, Phase 1, as you drive by, you know, you see it, is, is in the yellow. So this, this initial ratio is 42 residential and 58 non-residential or commercial. This also does pull in the educational parcel too, which is, which is right here. So from, from SIKR, we did work really hard on a whole bunch of things here. Michael, the chairman did mention the design guidelines. That is a robust document, 200 plus pages, gets into a lot of detail. Visual, we, we did a zone of visibility, but what really helped was doing the sidewalk. It was a four-hour sidewalk out there. We had a drone with us and we flew many different elevations and we could really understand what was going out there and what the impact would be. The net of that was that we reduced the height of the buildings. Some cases, we were high as 59 feet. We brought everything down to 46 feet measured using the codes of the town standards. Community setback, community character also out there. We realized that it was a must to maintain the vegetative setback along 9. Community character, again, pedestrian circulation. We worked real hard on planning this, as you saw. Traffic, the traffic study that Chazen did prepare demonstrated that it was below the '07 peaks, did not increase from that. We went back and forth on that, had, you know, had additional studies and comments on whether or not we included things and we, whether we included the amphitheater or other public open spaces that would be used by people other than living in the residence. We worked through all of that. And really, that's it. That's the extent of the presentation. I have more information if, if needed to, to present, but I'll turn it back over to you, Michael.
Thank you, Larry. That was a very comprehensive and talked through a big, big picture approach. I want to assure anyone watching or planning to speak tonight that this, that kind of summation you saw, again, is, there's been years of going into detail. And when Larry mentioned the design guidelines being 200 pages, that took a lot of work back and forth to make sure that we all agreed on an architectural style that would fit sort of the area of the Hudson Valley, as well as the character of Hyde Park. So you will see lots of stone, wood, glazing, et cetera. This is leading me to say that I think this is a very exciting project. This will be the largest development the town has ever seen because there is a central wastewater treatment plant serving the entire site as opposed to conventional septic like we have just up the hill from Teller Hill North in the main part of Hyde Park. This is going to allow this kind of compact developments you see. I also want to point out that Vice Chair Dexter and I were really the only two, besides Tad and Pete as consultants, two who worked on the original plan back in 2005, 6 and 7. One of the things that we learned back then was that even though the code requires it to be 50/50, in all honesty, if you look at the range of plan development projects across the nation, you start to discover that if it's really 50/50, it's very hard for that population to support the entire non-residential or the commercial uses. So it seems appropriate, at least to me, and I believe to my colleagues, that that increase should go up because during the winter months, when you don't have visitors, a lot of tourists, you need to have some group of people that will be living on site who can still support the commercial aspects that are inside there, whether that's retail, office, or, you know, experiential, like the restaurants that are going to be there, et cetera. You need someone close by when there's snow on the roads everywhere so that it's difficult to get to this place to support it. So I believe that that's, we, we've been working with this, this part of the concept with the applicants, and that's why it changed from 62 to 38, went up a little bit. But we recognize that there needs to be residential there. In addition, one of the goals and criteria for this district was to provide a range of housing. The original proposal did not necessarily have rentals. That wasn't always worked out as finely as it is here. But the originals that they would have had would have been the loft space that would have been live work. For the rest of it, it was all homeownership. As we know, these days, there are more and more people who choose to rent because they don't want the responsibility of single-family house or having to mow, et cetera. So this provides a range of options, a range of housing sizes, so that you can have estate homes, you can have cottage homes, as Larry mentioned, et cetera. So before I go on to the consultants, actually, let me go on to the consultants. Ms. Franson, anything to add for tonight?
No, not at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Bonnie. Mr. Sotero? Pete?
Same here, sorry. Was muted.
Ms. Paldaro?
No new comments.
And Ms. Moss?
Uh, no new comments.
And before I ask for comments from my board, let's go ahead and start with members of the public who signed up. I believe the Chris and Andrew.
Open the hearing.
I thought I already did that, did I not?
Yeah, I made, I made the motion.
Yes, we opened it. We opened it, Victoria, and Rob Waters seconded.
Oh, okay. I missed it. Sorry.
I sometimes let them speak beforehand. So I believe the people who signed up is, there's a Chris McCracken. Chris, do you want to unmute and speak if you'd like?
Sure. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Great. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Chris McCracken. I'm a resident of Poughkeepsie, been in the, in Dutchess County for, for many, many years. And, you know, I've seen the progression of the project. My wife works in Rhinebeck, so we end up driving by it pretty frequently. And, you know, from what I've seen over the course of time and then seeing some of the presentations, to, to me and to us as, as local residents, it looks like a great project. I think it's going to be a, a nice addition to the area. I think it complements the culinary property well in terms of the location and from what we've heard of their, their plans in terms of the amenities and the types of commercial or retail they may end up including. And certainly, you know, the unexpected change in the world over the past two years, I think the, the increase in residential makes a lot of sense from what we were seeing in our neighborhood in terms of home sales and the competitiveness of, of how those have gone. And it just seems from, you know, from their dedication, from the time that they started it and the investment they've made, that they are going to carry through on, on, on what they've proposed here. And I do think it's a good addition to the area. So hopefully we'll see it approved and move into construction. So thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Of course. Thank you, Mr. McCracken, and thanks for those positive comments. The next person who signed up, I don't see his name here, is Andrew Featherston. Would Andrew be present? Okay, moving on. The next person who signed up is Mike Oates. Ms. Oates, do you want to unmute and offer comments?
Yeah. Yes, great. Thank you. Thank you, Michael. Thank you, everybody on the planning board for, for your time and consideration. I think, you know, obviously, you know, we've been involved with this project, you know, for, for quite a long time. You know, and, and as, as an organization, the Hudson Valley Economic Development Corporation is in, you know, full support of, of, of the proposal and what we see as, as truly a transformational project, not only for Hyde Park, Dutchess County, but certainly for the entire Hudson Valley region. So, you know, I, I think the work that's been done by the Bellfield team in partnership and collaboration with, with the planning board and the town board is, is really is, is in essence, a model on, on, on smart development and, and collaboration. So I think, I think what was presented by Larry was, was fantastic. And, you know, again, we're in full support and we'd like to see this project move forward as quickly as possible to bring, you know, that investment, those jobs, you know, to the region and to the Hyde Park community. So again, thank you, everybody, for your time and, and consideration.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you, Mike.
Ms. Henshaker, Kate, would you like to speak? I know you just signed up. You don't have to.
Um, I think I'm going to, this is the end of the public hearing?
Well, this is the public hearing just for us because we're just making a recommendation on the concept plan to the town board. The town board will be holding its own public hearing where they will consider additional comment.
Yeah, I'm just, um, you know, I'm visual, so I'm very curious as to what it, what the buildings are going to look like. And I'd like to get a look at that design specifications manual.
So it's called, it's, it's posted on the town website, design, if you go to the Bellafield. So it's called, it's, it's posted on the town website. If you go to the Bellfield P U D, I think it is. And click onto that and you'll see various components and the design guidelines is its own. You can read them online. And there, it's very pictorial. It's not really reading so much as it is looking at a range of options, say for the town homes, a range of options for the garden homes, a range of styles that you could have. There you go. Thank you, Neil. Thank you.
And Kate, the public hearing is going to be left open for written comment for seven days. So you can take your time to look at it and then provide the planning board with written comment in addition to commenting to the town board.
And of course, it's probably way too early to even know what types of commercial businesses are coming in. I, I, I just keep going by the, the Shop Right development just a few miles down the road. And I see so many franchises, you know, being that, that I'm sure it's nice to go grab a burger or whatever. But I didn't know if they had any offers or had any idea of what type of commercial businesses were coming in.
Okay, inside the application materials that are posted, Neil has the design guidelines posted there or called it up on the screen. But inside you'll see what the mix is they're proposing. They already have some tenants identified. I don't want to say the names out loud tonight because I don't want to queer the deal, just in case. But I can assure you that this will not look like Hudson Heritage just to the south. I promise you. They, they, they have a cidery, they have a winery, they have several restaurants. One restaurant includes performance space. So for midsize groups to come and perform, there's going to be a couple of signature restaurants. And in terms of retail, they have been speaking to a bakery that if I said the name, you would know. So there's definitely a culinary as well as an agricultural production theme to everything that's going to be offered. In addition to that, there'll be your regular kind of service retail, we assume. You know, hair salon, dry cleaners that will serve the population that's there. Those will probably not come forward until they move forward further with getting more population because you're not going to have a dry cleaner for two buildings initially. But it's that kind of thing. And there's also, we hope, down the line, going to be destination retail. Right now, it's difficult to predict that, as you know, because COVID has just accelerated that trend for people ordering online. And golly, I have to admit, I just ordered something myself. I, I couldn't find something today. Different locations, I thought, I wonder if Amazon has it. And I did it. And I hate doing that, but at least I tried the local possibilities first. So at any rate, but you'll be able to see inside there an idea of the mix. In addition, I, I'm not trying to criticize Hudson Heritage, but when you go inside there, while there's different commercial uses, they're kind of separated. And it's, it seems to me more of a drivable area than it does a walkable thus far. And one of the reasons that we did the sidewalk, sidewalk was because we wanted to get an idea with walking down that main street, what it would feel like. We did the drones. We could say, how tall will the buildings be? And so I think that you're going to probably really be looking at a compact walkable area where you'll be able to go and park. There is a parking garage that's proposed. It will be disguised on the outside. It's a two deck as well as possibly with a green roof. But the idea is to get you into a destination parking area and then actually walk around and explore. That's why I said the landscaping is a really big part of this. To me, it's a big part of this design and concept plan because there, again, it's experiential. When you walk around, you're supposed to be saying, oh, this is sort of every, every great thing about the Hudson Valley all in one area. So I hope that answers some of your questions.
It, it certainly did. And, and my comment to, to all what you just said is it sounds like that's heading in a much, a much more interesting direction than what happened just further south. And I think what you're saying about experiencing it and going in and discovering mystery or enjoying something instead of just driving to a place, stopping, grabbing what you want because that's really all that you're headed for. You're going to spend more time and also possibly shop in smaller stores, smaller, possibly locally owned stores that will make it much more community friendly and beneficial. So.
That's, that's one, now, one of the goals is not, remember, the, the primary purpose of the criteria for the district is to get visitors to come and stay. But it's also to have people from town, you know, town individuals come in and be able to shop, as you just said, and experience everything that's there as well. Sometimes we rush around so much in Hyde Park, we forget what beautiful area we have actually right here at, at our fingertips. And the applicants, at least in my opinion, have done an admirable job of trying to capitalize on those assets and make sure that we all kind of slow down and look. That's why all the stores are so, going to be so close, so infill, because it's going to look more like an older village style, you know, development.
Excellent. Thank you very much for allowing me to make a few comments.
Of course, Kate. Would anyone else like to speak about this application? Stephen Lewis on YouTube asked, will you be talking about Greensfield's zoning for renters? That is not tonight, and that would not be about this application. That would be about the next time that we have, I believe it's sixty four Andover on the agenda. But thank you, Mr. Lewis, for your interest. Would anyone else like to speak about this application? Let me go then to my colleagues. Vice Chair Dexter, additional comments?
Um, no, I'm just, I, I'm amazed at how quickly we've come and, and just the vast amount of work that the team has, has done. I'm very, I'm, I'm proud to be a member of this planning board. And I'm just, again, it is a very exciting project. So other than that, nothing.
Thank you, Ann. Ms. Weiser?
Um, I agree with Ms. Dexter. I think it's a very exciting project. It feels really right for Hyde Park. And again, I'm also very proud to be on this board and to have, have helped shaped it. It's been, it's been a really great experience. And I think we, we dug really, really deeply to make sure that what, what comes out of it will be something that is beneficial to our town.
Thank you. Mr. Napoli? Comments?
Um, this, this has been an extraordinary process that we have all gone through. And I'm sure at times there's always been concern about where was it ever going to end up? Not due to any lack of trying on anyone's part. This is transformational, more than I think most people can realize, more than I would have been able to realize if I was not part of the process along the way. I think this will be something that the town can be extremely proud of and will be amazed at how this will very positively have this great impact on our town and encouragement of the businesses and other developers to come and take another look at Hyde Park. And I think that's critical. And, and I know I have had some concerns within the process, but I've never have had any doubts about where we were going to end up and how positive it will be.
Thank you. That was very eloquently stated. Ms. Wasser? Stephanie?
Wow, I feel, even though I agree with everything that's been said, I feel obligated to just say a few words. I want to actually speak about the applicant who I think has really come a long way in their approach and their openness to working with the concerns of the planning board and the town board. And we've really come a long way on the height and some of the massing, the ratio. And I really appreciate not just their monetary investment, but their time. And of course, the time for them is monetary because they have a huge team that has worked on all these iterations till we could all get to a place where we were comfortable. So I'm also very proud to be on the board and to be able to support this project.
Thank you, Stephanie. Mr. Waters, any comments? I know you, you just joined us, but you're familiar with the project.
Oh, sure, sure am. Well, I, I'd like to thank the applicant for the informative and detailed presentation to start and all the hard work by the whole team, their team, to address the board's concerns from the start and to develop it into this, looks like to be a wonderful project. And I also wanted to thank the board or, and the boards for all their hard work in this and this, the journey to get to this point. So.
Thank you, Rob. Oliver, do you want to wrap it up for us?
Sure, pretty, pretty simple for me, right? I, I don't know if there's anything else I could say, but I, I'm extremely excited to see this project come to Hyde Park. And I, I think it's a great example to show the public how our board can work with an applicant to get to a project that, as others have said, we feel comfortable with and to have that improvement for our town and, and better our town. And that's why we're all here doing what we're doing. So thank you and thank you to Tom's team and the whole Bellfield team. I think it's going to be a great project and I'm excited to see it come into site plan soon and see where it goes. Thank you.
Well, I think you've heard it there. Larry, Jennifer, Tom, Larry as well, et cetera, et cetera. We got to where we needed to go. So make a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close? Rob Waters?
Ducking that, Chris Oliver?
All in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
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 I will note here that as Victoria, Ms. Paldaro pointed out earlier, we do allow seven days for any member of the public to send us comments. And those can be sent in to, by email, obviously, or snail mail, take your preference. We also, team, our team now have a big amount of work ahead of us because we have a recommendation letter to write to the town board that can't just say, yeah, approve it. We've got to go into some details. We also will need to conclude Seeker. We have our consultants working behind the scenes on that. I've been sending out emails today on it, but in essence, I do want to support what Mr. Boudreaux said earlier. And I, this was said on the record probably a year ago, but it, it never hurts to repeat it. When you go from, when you reduce your commercial, even though you increase your residential, residential trips generated per hour and per day are far less than what commercial is because commercial draws in people all day long. So traffic impacts are going to be reduced. That was recognized. And when Larry said that there was some questions by us, we didn't, we weren't certain, we didn't see the methodology. So he asked, did it include the amphitheater? Did it include performances? Did it include? What if the two hotels both have weddings that day during the day and they were having a performance or having a food festival? All of that got factored in. You know, you do have a four lane highway on one side of it. You have several, you have a town road and a limited access county road on the other side. So we feel that this is not going to burden the town because the last thing we want to see is traffic snarls. That noted, there will occasionally be a traffic snarl. We know that. But that's something that is not mitigatable, so to speak, because we don't want a six lane highway in between Poughkeepsie and Hyde Park. Let's be honest. So we feel as though we're going to be able to come up very, not quickly, but with diligence, we're going to come up with the recommendation letter to the town board that will be shown to all the board members prior. But that'll be, a lot of that work will be done by the consultants as well. So that noted, it's been a pleasure, guys. We know we'll be working again. Yes, Councilman Krepp.
I just wanted to let you know that the town board on Monday set the public hearing for this approval for December thirteenth at six oh five. So hope to see, and that'll be in person. So we hope to see people there.
Would you like any members of the planning board to be present?
You're more than welcome, but it's, it's not, it's not needed.
Okay. I'm always thinking in case we need to answer questions, but what am I saying? You have Larry, Tom, Jennifer, et cetera, to answer questions. We don't need to.
Yes, as well as the material collected over the last few months.
Yes. So at any rate, again, as Neil just said, there'll be ample opportunity for further comment if you'd like. And that's January, I'm sorry, December the thirteenth at six oh five P M. Thank you, Deputy Supervisor Kreppnick. And Bellfield team, all of you have a very happy, safe, lovely, family-filled Thanksgiving. We'll see you in December.
Thank you so much. And Michael, on behalf of Bellfield and the entire board, I'd like to thank everyone on the board and yourself from our point of view. It's been a great detailed process and I think the end product is, everyone's going to be happy with.
I think so. Thanks.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Good night.
The next item on the agenda is a workshop. This is an applicant, Jennifer Mastroni, who's seeking site plan approval for animal husbandry. The location is Nine Gary Drive. This is off nine G. And when we say animal husbandry, through many prior applications and discussions, it was determined by Ms. Moss and the zoning board of appeals that raising chickens, chickens are not pets. So it's not like cats or dogs is animal husbandry. The applicant has been before the zoning board of appeals and received all requested variances. And believe me, there were a lot, as Jennifer will tell us in a second. You were sent pictures of where the, where it is located. I'm going to suggest right now that we might want to arrange a site visit because I've driven, I've already driven there. That's where you can see it. It's at a point that's the farthest location from their home, others' homes, other homes. And it's actually kind of a cool run. I believe that these are all female hens because if you have roosters, there are different setback requirements. These are all females. I believe that the run's going to change a little bit because the run might need to be a little bit longer. But otherwise, we've seen the variety of pictures shown for which you can see what it is. We're prepared to start the process tonight by sending this to county planning because even though I don't think county planning will say, oh, this coop rises to the level of countywide significance, is still located within five hundred feet as the very eagle eyed attorney Patrick Logan caught. So we're not going to make any mistakes on this one. So we are going to type the action tonight referred to county planning. Is there anything else you want to add, Jennifer?
I feel like you hit it all. But yeah, no, to answer the couple of questions you had, we do, we have all girls in the coop. And yeah, we're looking to extend the run so that it meets the requirements for the town for the special equation for how many chickens per square feet. So that's where it's coming from.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And while, so our, this is sort of what's funny. Our code requires screening between residential and non residential uses. Obviously, this is sort of a residential use because it's not like a commercial agricultural program. I mean, if you look at the pictures closely, you'll see there are tree stumps around. So there have been some dead trees there, et cetera. Whether it is I wanted to go do a site visit, as is our habit for solar arrays, et cetera, it might be that we might ask the applicants to plant some forsythia someplace or something to help screen, but I think it would help us to take a look at it instead.
Absolutely.
And I know, Jennifer, you're not going to say no.
No, you can come see my chickens. They love visitors.
Tad and I actually met with Jennifer, I think, about a year ago during the summer for the application. But she was advised to go to get the various variances first. Again, all have been granted. Were there, I heard that there were eighteen, Jennifer?
There were. I want to say they said we hit the record.
I kind of think you did. So congratulations, though.
Thank you.
And there is, as you all can see, there's a distance from this to any other structures. The chickens are not free range, free running, et cetera. They're confined. According to Ms. Moss, at the time that Jennifer came in, there were actually other neighbors who were keeping chickens who were not enclosing them. And so there was some concern hers were amongst those, but they were not, ever were apparently. So I'm going to ask for comments. Ms. Moss, you want to first add any comments?
Uh, just that one of the other individuals that had chickens has gotten rid of them.
Thank you. I love how discreet we are tonight. Pete, I don't think you have any, anything on this, right? Nope.
Oh, no.
Thank you. And by the way, Bonnie has left because she's not on any of the other applications either. Do you have any questions or comments from the board? Anyone? Just raise your hand.
Got a quick question.
First, and then I'll go to Victoria. Yes, Ms. Weiser?
I'm sorry. Jennifer, are you proposing putting a fence around the, the coop?
Yeah, so the, the new run will, it has to be enclosed. So yeah, we're going to put fencing around it to keep them in.
That's it. Thanks.
No problem.
What kind of fence? A solid wooden fence or?
On one side, yes, just for privacy. And then chicken wire on the other side that's facing like the wooded area. Just so it looks nice and it looks, you know, like nice if anyone's driving by.
Paldaro, you raise your hand?
Oh, I, I was just asking and if I missed it, I'm sorry, if there was going to be a recommendation to waive the hearing or if you'd be scheduling. if there was going to be a recommendation to waive the hearing or if you'd be scheduling a hearing on this application.
I believe we were going to set a public hearing tonight to allow neighbors to speak, although I have a feeling many of the neighbors spoke already at the ZBA hearings. But if there's been any, if there's been any kind of person speaking to object, we should hear them, I think, here as well. And that may not happen, as I said, the variances have been granted. So, but as is always, Ms. Moss would have to make that recommendation. And that has not been made so far, Tad, correct?
No, no, we still have a complaining neighbor.
So there being no other comments from the board or consultants, then we're prepared to take, start the process going tonight with a resolution, I believe, introduced by Ms. Weiser.
Yes, resolution classifying the action and referring the application to Dutchess County Department of Planning and Development. Mastroni Chicken Coop, November 17th, 2021, resolution number 2021-52. Whereas, 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 now therefore be it resolved that the planning board hereby, one, classifies the project as a Type II action under SECRA, and, two, directs its secretary to refer the plan, the site plan to the Dutchess County Department of Planning and Development pursuant to Section 2239-M of the General Municipal Law.
Second, it's Diane Denaply.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next, make it a motion to set a public hearing for Mastroni Chicken Coop for December 15th.
Diane Denaply still moved.
Second, Ann Weiser.
All in favor, please raise your hand and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Mr. Waters. Motion carries unanimously as well. Jennifer, we'll see you back on December 15th. I'll be, we'll be emailing to set up a sidewalk. It will be probably like a Saturday or Sunday afternoon, just a quick visit with as many board members as we can get over, okay?
Sounds good. Sounds good. I'll be waiting for you.
Thank you, and it's good to see you after all this time.
Thank you.
Have a very nice Thanksgiving.
Thanks, everyone, you too.
Bye.
Next item on the agenda is a new sign for Pellegrino Healing Center. This is a freestanding sign located at 4307 Albany Post Road. We have a recommendation from the zoning administrator, the zoning administrator, to recommend issuance for the sign permit, and I love to say this when I say it, it's code compliant in advance.
Yay, thank you so much.
We love them when we see them. Miss Bellman, do you want to add? Yep, there you go. You see the symbol?
Yes. Nice symbol.
Very nice. So do you want to add anything, Ms. Bellman?
Um, no, I believe that you all have the information that was needed for, for the sign. I'm actually not the one who was the main person working on this, but she couldn't make it tonight, so I'm, I'm here.
Coming in, it's okay, it's an attractive sign, and I like the description, the business it's, it's offering now. So I think it's a little more clear.
Yeah, it's going to fill a great need in the Hudson Valley, that's for sure.
Absolutely. Any comments from the board? Okay, then I believe this will be introduced by Ms. Wasser.
Yes, thanks. Resolution recommendation for issuance of sign permit pursuant to town code Section 108-24.3A4D, November 17th, 2021, resolution 2020-16. Whereas, 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 now therefore be it resolved, the board hereby recommends the zoning administrator issue the signed permit for the Pellegrino Healing Center, replacement freestanding sign based on the signed permit application revised drawings dated September 14th, 2021.
Second, Ann Dexter.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Bellman, have a happy Thanksgiving as well.
Great, thank you so much, Mr. Chairman and board members. Have a happy Thanksgiving, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Enjoy. Bye.
Next item on the agenda is Bellfield wastewater treatment facility lot line alteration. We granted the applicants their request to change the actual lot lines that they needed to enlarge based on the size of the wastewater treatment facility. We had a very eloquently sent letter asking for the two 90-day extensions that we are allowed to grant and for them to meet the conditions of approval. These do not require, these kinds of extensions do not require a public hearing, unlike something else down the line that will. So I make sure that Mr. Waters, our new board member, is aware of that. When they need an extension in which to start or complete substantial construction after I sign or after the chair signs, then that requires a public hearing. But if you just want to say you just get more time, we're only allowed to do two 90-day extensions. So this grants any applicant up to a year in which to meet all conditions. And as Larry and Jennifer explained, they're still dealing with a certain agency that they need to get approval from. But they, we believe they're going to be there soon, so. Ms. Ventile, do you want to offer anything else?
No, I think you've summarized it very well, and we would appreciate the extensions. We were confident that we will be able to complete the work within the allotted time, but we need the extensions.
Thank you, and Mr. Sotero and Ms. Moss were on-site today for a meeting. Do you want to add anything from the meeting, Pete or Tad?
I don't believe Pete was there. I was on-site with them, and we were talking about with the building department and wastewater and health department and Larry, everything that's going on with that facility and what needs to be done to kind of work through the building permit process for both the existing conditions and the proposed expansion. And I thought the meeting went very well. I think we're on track, and it was good to see everybody there and working together.
Thank you. That must be music to Jennifer Ventile's ears, I'm going to guess. It is to my. So any further discussion from the board? Any questions? Okay, I believe this resolution belongs to Ms. Dexter.
It does. Resolution to grant extension of time to satisfy conditions of approval for Bellfield wastewater treatment facility, November 17th, 2021, resolution number 2021-05B. Whereas, 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 now therefore be it resolved that the planning board hereby grants the applicant two 90-day extensions of time to satisfy the conditions of subdivision approval to and including May 31st, 2022.
Second, it's Stephanie Wasser.
Thank you. All in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
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 Carries unanimously. The next item on the agenda is a sister request. This is the extension of the time to meet conditions for the site plan amendment. When they enlarged the site, it also required an amendment to the site plan that approved the original size of the building. The same, everything exactly the same applies. Anybody have any questions on this one? Then I believe Chris has this resolution.
Resolution number 2021-07B, resolution to grant extension of time to satisfy conditions of site plan approval. Whereas, 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 now therefore be it resolved that the planning board hereby grants the applicant two 90-day extensions of time to satisfy the conditions of site plan approval to and including May 31st, 2022.
There a second?
I second it. Rob Waters.
Thank you, Mr. Waters. Any further discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Motion carries unanimously as well. Next item on the agenda is another item for Bellfield. This is an extension of the site plan approval to complete construction. So as we all know, I shouldn't say we all know. Rob, again, for you, when you, once I sign a site plan or whatever chair signs the site plan, you have a year in which to start construct, substantial construction, and two years to complete. That's kind of standard in the code. But of course, with projects like this that have multiple phasing, you may not get everything done completely within two years, just like another site we'll be looking at, we looked at it earlier, River Ridge. We extend that periodically because, again, it's phased based on market demand. In this instance, we had the COVID pandemic that kind of stopped all hospitality uses for a while. And I know that in speaking to the applicants, Mr. Mulroy in particular, they're very near getting financing, but first they need to have the extensions of the time in which to complete construction, which we want to give them so they can go fully vertical. When Larry said they got phone calls with the stone walls, I thought, wow, that's like 4 feet. Wait till you get to be all that height with the hotel. You'll really get your calls there. So this is only a motion to set the public hearing as required for December 1st. Any questions from the board or consultants? Okay, I believe this motion, oh, sorry, I get a motion to set the public hearing for December 1st.
I make that motion. Rob Waters.
Thank you. I'll second, Chris Oliver.
Thank you. All in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Ms. Ventile, Mr. Mulroy, and Larry Peltier, now you can say goodbye. Have a happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you very much.
I have a feeling we might be in touch before that nonetheless, so we'll see.
It's possible. It's possible.
Thank you very much.
Happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you very much.
Next item on the agenda is a site plan waiver request made by Mr. David Rosean. This is located at 42 Old Post Road. The site actually will be visible in many ways from the historic, because Old Post Road is a state designated historic highway. In addition, you can see it from various locations within the hamlet, but the addition is architecturally consonant with the main house. There'll be a little addition off to the right, and it's done in the same, that's a cute house, by the way. When I saw it, I thought, that's why you love walking in Statsburg. The architecture is still so neat over there, so. Anybody have any questions about this? Then I believe this resolution will be introduced by Ms. Denaply.
Yes. Site plan waiver, town code Section 108-9.4C2, resolution number 2021-53. Whereas eight times, therefore be it resolved that the town of Hyde Park Planning Board hereby waive site plan requirements for the proposed changes as described in the building permit received by the building department October 21st, 2021, and per the request to the planning board dated November 2nd, 2021.
I second that, Ann Weiser.
Thank you. All in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Congratulations, Mr. Rosean, can't wait to see the addition that's going to be proposed. The next item on the agenda is Jeffrey Groves Estates. I've discussed this before with the board. I don't want to go into much of the detail because we're going to correct the errors that happened. Mr. Kaufman, we are moving forward for you tonight, finally. I hope you're happy. Briefly, in essence, there is, we'll say, an inadvertent request to the Division of Real Property Services, the counties, and which, if there's a subdivision that's been filed for over five years, as long as there's one owner controlling all the lots, you can uncombine, you can combine all those lots into one again. This was done, when it was done, for 47, excuse me, for 38 townhomes. It was also done for the road that, the public road that's proposed to be dedicated to the town to actually access them. However, the applicant is proposing nothing different than what was approved way back when. If we will recall, this section of the subdivision and the site plan was approved back in 2007. The other portion of the original parent parcel had nine single-family homes. That came back to this board to be re-subdivided, have a new site plan approval for now 12 townhomes. That side remains intact. The parcel for the wastewater treatment facility remains intact, open space parcels remain intact. It's just getting the 38 lots and a lot for Blair Road back. After much discussion between the applicant, Mr. Kaufman, thank heavens, Mr. Sotero, Ms. Moss, our attorneys, and with the very astute help of Jason T. to the Department of Health, we finally figured out what they need to submit to us because that's sort of been the big thing. And because this was reviewed so extensively, and we also have a site plan that is still valid attached to it, as long as that is referenced in the application, Ms. Moss is comfortable that this can proceed forward. So anybody have any questions? It's, as I said, it's kind of complicated to describe, but we can have a fairly easy, simple solution, and that's where we're going to go tonight. So tonight, we're going to actually set a public hearing. As I said, there's no provision to waive a public hearing for subdivisions under our subdivision law, Chapter 96. That can only be done on site plans and must be recommended by Ms. Moss. But in a quirk of case law, as I like to point out and did earlier today, for site plans, you can open a public hearing before you conclude seeker, but for subdivisions, you are required to conclude seeker first, before you set a public, or open a public hearing, I should say. I'm not sure if that case law still stands everywhere. I keep feeling that somebody must have made that error but never been sued on it, Victoria. However, we're not going to be sued. So we're doing this in a proper order, and I'm actually going to introduce this resolution myself. I won't read everything, but for anyone at home, if you read the second and third paragraphs, that's actually a nice summarization of all that I just went through. So, resolution reaffirming prior secret determination of non-significance excepting the sketch plan, Jeffrey Groves Estates, November 17th, 2021, resolution 2021-54. Whereas, 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 now therefore be resolved, the planning board hereby classifies the major project as a major subdivision under the Hyde Park subdivision law. Two, accepts the sketch plan in accordance with provisions of Section 96-12C of the code. Three, reaffirms this prior secret determination of significance in negative declaration finding that the project as proposed will not result in any significant adverse environmental impacts and that a DEIS will not be prepared. Four, refers the application to the Roosevelt Fire District for its review and comment. I will note here that we are referring this to the Roosevelt Fire District because of their request. If you remember when this was originally approved, and even when we did the re-subdivision of the other site, there was still Statsburg Fire District. Those merged, and the Roosevelt individuals would like to have a copy of the plans that they would like to keep and maybe be able to comment on. So at any rate, do I have a second?
Second, Ann Dexter.
Thank you. Any further discussion by the board? All in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
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 Motion carries unanimously. Okay, Lou, we're off and running. Now I get a motion to set the public hearing for the subdivision on December 15th.
I make that motion, Ann Weiser.
I'll second it, Diane Denaply.
Favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
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 Motion carries unanimously. Okay, Lou, we're going to get there, promise. Can you take this to the bank now tomorrow night, I mean tomorrow?
You're muted.
You're muted, you're muted, Lou, you're muted. You're still muted, we can't, there you go.
Okay, so yes, I'll be taking the bank, we'll be, we'll be glad to tell that to the bank tomorrow. I just wanted to express my appreciation to the board and, you know, Tad and Pete for putting in the effort. It was a very complicated solution for what should have been a simpler one. But, you know, I appreciate your helping me in correcting the error. So 12-1 would have been great, 12-15 is perfectly acceptable. So thank you so much, and if there's anything that the board needs between now and then, or Tad, or Pete, if you, I, I made the corrections that you recommended and requested. So I'm hoping the plan is in good shape now. But when the dust settles tomorrow morning, after you all have a catch your breath from the efforts tonight, if you need something, let me know. Thank you all again.
You know, I also want to note that the county attorney reached out to me, but we've been playing phone tags, so there may be additional updates to know.
Well, what I did was, just to, for your education, the, there's an opinion that the entire site plan might have been knocked out. The information that was provided by tax services shows only the lots and the road were condensed. So the, I believe that the original file map 12164 still exists and is valid. In any event, even if it's not valid, Tad and Pete have come up with notes that will be satisfactory on the proposed plan that we're submitting to, you know, in either eventuality.
Okay.
I'm not sure where the opinion comes, that this, that the site plan was nullified, but I believe what's controlling here would not be a county attorney or any other attorney. It would be Ms. Moss, who has made the assertion, made the statement that the site plan is still valid. Therefore, unless someone else wants to sue, or first I should say, go to the zoning board of appeals so they could exhaust all administrative remedies before suing, they are free to go for their interpretation. But that would be a cumbersome process, and why would anybody follow that? Nothing is changing, nothing.
It's just that in conversations I've had with Tad, she, I think she's now satisfied herself to that fact that you just espoused, that the, the underlying site plan still exists, which, you know, all the open space and all of this, the sewer treatment plant, all of that is still existing and valid. So we're going to fix the mistake, and I appreciate that so much.
In the meantime, we'll see December 15th, and you also enjoy Thanksgiving. Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, this brings us to the end of the meeting. Make it a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion, Chris Oliver.
Second, Ann Dexter.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And now to all of, all of you, my planning board family. Please enjoy Thanksgiving safely, enjoy yourselves thoroughly because we have a lot of work right after that starting. Have a nice night, and thank you supervisor.
Happy Thanksgiving, everybody.
Happy Thanksgiving. Yes, take care.
Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you, Neil.